The picture that we got here on the little brochure shows the project. We've captured the projects that get us the most money. We also decided to go on the hill or up on the secondary campus where the junior high and high school is because when we build a classroom that the high school can go into, the junior high gets to take over the classrooms the high school vacated. So now we get two for one, two classes for $1 in our project and alleviate the most crowded campus we have, and that's the junior high. I want to open up to any questions that people that are here, do you have any questions about the project for me or any of our distinguished guests? If not, and again, we'll keep asking questions. I'm going to ask our members if they would make statements in their areas about our financing, the architect, and the facilities division on what's going on. Tyler, do you mind if we start with you? If you'll come on up, that way we can get you on camera and on the microphone here. That would be great.
My name is Tyrell Pace. I work as senior project administrator for the facilities division in Little Rock. It's a very rewarding job, and I've worked in education for 14 years prior to that in public schools and various roles. And so I can see both sides of this when I go into schools currently in my position based on, you know, compared it to my older position. But I'm going to give, I'm going to go into the project scope and the inspections that took place in order to come or the division to come to a final conclusion on this application. And this is a very detailed process. I've been in part of public schools, like I said, for 14 years, but until I received the job that I have now, I did not realize the detailed reviews that take place in the partnership program. And it's, the reason is, it's very competitive and is based on, every decision is based on the rule that supports it. But we thoroughly, we check out every project that comes in. Last year, we had 210 projects and we verify onsite every project so we can award the schools that needed it versus the schools that just wanted it. And that puts a lot of strain on our staff, but it supports Arkansas and the public schools that way. So the first step was the FCI on the auditorium. And what this is, is a facility condition index, basically us taking the team in, looking at the facility and in various aspects, structural, down to subsystems and the percentage of replacement cost. A 65% will qualify district for demolition. Doesn't mean it's condemned, but it's eligible for demolition. This particular facility rated a 97%. So it was not in good shape at all. That's the highest one I've seen so far. The cost value on this particular project is $179.23. The division reviewed project size, POR size, is 54,425. Project qualifying cost was $9,754,592.75. And the state financial participation is $5,312,822.96. So I discussed just very briefly about the FCI part. The second piece of this project was a POR verification. And what this is, is program of requirements is how we go through what a school campus has, and we see if there's a need for additional space based on the spaces the district has. And it's very evident that this district was short on space based on their suitability that came out. Portables, the district purchased portables for short-term fix until this, this project and this plan was put into, put into play. I want to talk very briefly about the ranking, the priority ranking. In this cycle, this 21 through 23 biennium, there's three different tiers of priority ranking. There's space, space replacement, and warm, safe, dry systems. And the funding starts at the top and the most, the high priority of space. And then based on the amount of funding, we go down the list. This district over 10 years had a 9.33% growth. And what this is based on is your ADM reporting. So from, this particular project is a 21, 22. So it was rated on your ADM from 2009 to 2010 school year through the 2019, 2020 school year, and then we look at that growth. So it's factual. I mean, it's based on your third quarter students in your school. I'll make one more point on the enrollment. As I said, the 10-year growth is 9.33. And in the space projects, this school district was number 13 in the state in growth. Projection-wise, 2029, 2030, you're looking at an increase from grade six through 12 of 188. And that's significant when you start counting teachers and students in a classroom, what you, what you can have in a classroom. Do we have any questions so far? The POR, program of requirements, it's, it lets us know based on your student enrollment. I get, get in a habit of just saying POR, 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 but it's program of requirements. What we do is put your student population in, and it lets us, it equates the product of what spaces are needed in each grade or the spaces are verified that you do not make or do not have to have. Did I leave anything out that you think?
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Great information.
Again, I appreciate because we've set through, it seems like, days of meetings with these details that he's talking about, chasing them and all throughout this process. And so, and then coordinate that with our architect and then our financial folks. And it is, and this project to go back is like taking two puzzles, putting them together and trying to come up with one puzzle. And so I appreciate the work everybody's made to rework this thing to try to find us how we can capture the money that we qualify for and make the most out of it without increasing taxes for folks. Randy, talk to us, our architect. Randy, would you come up and speak to it and also speak to the fact that not the state knows and whatever that things have to be done, but would you speak in general about what your involvement is with the project and what you see?
My name is Randy Palculek with JVP Architects. I've been working with the Batesville district for a number of years. Puzzle is probably the right, the best term for this. We started this process, the first thing we did is we analyzed all the buildings on the hill and all the buildings that are there, which classrooms, to go to which, what they're used for. And we developed a base plan of that. And then with many of these meetings, went through and started looking at possibilities of if we build this room, then what can that room be? Well, okay, well, let's look at something if we build a different type of room, what will it? So those are some of the puzzle pieces Dr. Hesker mentioned. As a design team, some of the things we have to balance, as Mr. Drell had mentioned, the state has their program of requirements, which is the minimum standard that Arkansas school has to meet. So they've, they've set the bar that all schools in Arkansas have to be at least at this level. Now, each district has their own specialties perhaps, you know, in their curriculum. So one district might have a much bigger band program. Another district might have more of an art program. So when we look at what the school needs, we take into what the state minimum standard is and requires space, which is what's partnered with the state. That's where that funding comes from. And we couple that also with what the school specific curriculum is. So those are two things we balance with. Of course, the most important thing we're doing when we design buildings is safety. So when we look at the campus, we look at ways to divide the campus up and reorganize it to keep kids safe. So you keep your junior high kids where they need to be, you keep your senior high kids where they need to be, and you decrease traffic flow. So these all are just little snippets of some of the planning that's gone in at this phase of the project. Something else to consider, and you know, time is of the essence. We mentioned interest rates earlier. Construction prices are also not coming down. They go up, so the quicker we get going, the, we get today's prices versus tomorrow's. And we've already seen tremendous increases over the last two years. So that's another, I guess, bullet point for the sense of urgency. So back to, I guess, Dr. Hesker mentioned, the proof of the states, that through our efforts of, and I mean, the team and the district's efforts of analyzing the campus as a whole and identifying what spaces exist, we have proven the point with the state, and the state's verified that in fact, there is a shortage of space on that campus. And that's why they're willing to partner to get, to get Batesville up to the minimum standard and then hopefully be on as well.
Could you talk about steel costs and then what's involved with kitchens and cafeterias on that cost and specs?
Okay, so all those things have gone up. I guess everyone probably saw on the news about lumber prices last year and how they skyrocketed and it came back down. Well, we've seen since May, a 300% increase in steel prices. We're hoping that will come back down. But if you think about how things are made and you, all the kitchen equipment and all the metal that's in that, those costs have gone up too. So, you know, that's kind of pensionous in a lot of ways and things we just can't control. But, you know, we were optimistic that maybe things would get better one day. I mean, but those are some of the other things we are dealing with right now as well, which has come into consideration on how we've pared down this, this project to be something that can be done right now.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it. And I won't tell you the time. I saw his office and the spread, the sheets and the time that he's looking at. Many options we won't even use, but he had to go through it to eliminate that to know what we could go to. So I appreciate your time and effort in that way as well. All right. And next is Michael Dobbs with our finance folks. Mike, would you please explain restructuring and what that means, please?
All right. I'm Michael Dobbs. I'm with First Security Beardsley out of Little Rock. We are a group of people that we work with school districts around the state. We currently work with about 126 out of the 230-ish school districts across the state and handle bond issues and all of the associated work that comes along with bond issues and financing projects and those sorts of things. And I've been lucky enough to have been with Beardsley for almost 17 years now, since 2005. So what we are looking at is what we call just a voted refunding and extension without an increase. So just to give you a little bit of background and history, back in 2010, the Batesville school district voters approved 9.85 debt mills for 30 years at the time. So in 2010, 30 years means that those mills currently are going through 2040 and supporting bond issue payments through 2040. So what we're now asking the voters to approve is that same 9.85 debt mills, and again, for 30 years. So this time it will be through 2052. So it's essentially a 12-year extension of the, of the millage. And within that framework, since we're keeping the revenues the same, we're looking to keep the bond issue payments essentially where they are now with no, you know, increase or decrease. So from a kind of a budgetary standpoint, same amount of revenue coming into the district, same amount of money going out on a bond payment each year. But where we're picking up money is we're able to pay off the, the bond issue that was done in 2015. That was actually a refinancing of the 2010 bond. So we lowered the rate, interest rate once in 2015. We kind of have an opportunity now to do that again. And by paying those bonds off and extending that payment out over time, what we're able to pick up is essentially $14.3 million today for the district to use for projects. So what you're going to see on the ballot is a proposed bond issue for 30 years in the amount of $34,255,000. So again, what that $34 million does, it pays off the 2015 bonds completely. It generates $14 million to put into the district's bank account for these projects, and it covers all the cost and fees, et cetera, that come along with, with that whole process. So there's nothing coming out of the district's pocket from an expense standpoint in that regards. And then also on the ballot, you're going to see exactly what, what that $34 million is used for. And like I said, it's going to be refunding the district's bonds dated November 1, 2015, constructing the cafeteria, fine arts classrooms, and theater, making improvements for additional classrooms at the junior high, and then constructing, refurbishing, remodeling school facilities. So kind of the general description there of the projects, exactly what all that money's going for. And we've got, you know, sample ballot language if anybody wanted to see that. But that's kind of the, the quick and dirty of what the ballot is and what the bond issue The, you know, just another point on the, the interest rates and whatnot. The 2015 bonds that we're paying off were originally done at 3.48%. We're hoping to be certainly under 3%. You know, today, maybe in the 2.5 to 2.6% range. We've actually started coming back down a little the last day or two. We hope to see that trend continue after a big kind of spike throughout January. So regardless of where we end up, we expect to be pretty well under, again, where that 2015 bond is currently. And that's just kind of the most efficient way to leverage those existing 9.85 debt mills, get the most out of them that we can without increasing the, the district's annual payments or affecting the budget in any way that way. There are other bond issues the district has outstanding. We're going to leave those outstanding either because they pay off fairly soon or the rate's so low that we don't want to mess with it. So that's kind of just an efficiency of handling that bond issue and getting it paid off. So again, that's kind of the quick and dirty information on the bond issue itself and kind of the thinking behind some of that. So any questions, anything else you'd like to address there?
Thank you. That was good. Anyone else? Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. And again, when we're looking at options, our financial folks, again, time is money. We postponed the vote in 2020. And since that time, construction has gone up $100 a square foot. Since that time, steel's gone up 300%. And since that time, interest rates are on the way back up. All of those things make the project where we get less classrooms for the same money the longer we wait. So again, we feel like this is urgent, that we are frugal on the board's part, on the administrator's part, the timing for financing and things. We want as much as we can get out of the facility to get to our kids and to the classrooms for teachers instead of into financing or inflation or supply chain issues. So, or cost of labor. So again, we feel like this is crucial, that we had the special election and that we get on this and get a start as well. Questions that we can answer for anyone here?
So basically, you're extending the bonds 12 years.
Is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, fit to, yeah.
In a nutshell.
Uh huh. 12 years from what they are right now?
And this is to meet current student needs?
Yes. This, this project is only about a third of what we were proposing in September.
What are you going to do if, if we continue to grow and two years down the road, we're out of space again? We're going to be looking at an increase at that time?
Yes. Because when you, when you cut it up into smaller bites, you have to keep coming back to the well more often.
Sure. Okay. If these facilities are going to be used by junior high, isn't that going to be a good bit of a jaunt for them to get from the junior high campus over in front of the high school?
Well, they're already making that jaunt now to eat and to have classes and to go to PE. And so they're pretty much making that jaunt where the classrooms would be anyway.
Is this not going to be in front of Congress Day or to the thought?
Well, the classrooms that the junior high is going to get, well, and to your point...
So none of the choirs or bands are going to be?
Yeah, yeah. The ones that, yes. And there's a shuttle. We'll run a shuttle for, for that service to and from. It's going basically from the junior high down to the football field.
So you're going to have expenses of shuttling kids? And that will increase a safety concern? If you've got scooter that misses the shuttle, is it just?
You know, we would, we would have to analyze it. You know, we just adjust and make it work. So it's like everything we do, we, we get people on it and we get the best plan. And yes, there would be a shuttle, have to, to send them back and forth. The classrooms that I was referring to is the ones that are vacated so that the junior high can move into, that's right there and about the cafeteria and stuff. That's where most of the junior high is going to be at. But for the choir and some of the arts, it wouldn't be shuttled.
And maybe other classrooms in those facilities, you're going to have kids going across campus.
Yeah.
And you've got traffic areas that to me would be a safety concern.
We, we would have to establish traffic patterns and set up security ways and things, procedures, how we do things.
Yeah. You've got manpower to hand the shuttle, expense for it.
We have bus drivers who, you know, they drive in the morning and drive at the evening, and then they're, they're at the shop or doing things. We can use them for shuttles throughout the day.
I think another really valuable thing that we did with our SR funds is we looked at getting 10 years ahead of our transportation fund in our plan. So that actually freed up quite a bit of our budget and our regular spending that we get each year from the state that maybe we can allocate some of those regular transportation funds to go toward those shuttles. So that might be something that we can, we can look at doing, correct?
And to your point, the safety issues that's created now because we don't have facilities are probably more of an alert than what you just mentioned. When we're telling juniors and seniors to leave campus because we don't have room to feed you, and they're out and about on their own, that's a lot bigger security risk than what you mentioned is, but it's a lot bigger when they're out on their own, out on the streets during lunchtime.
I'm looking at it, and that scenario, that students are meeting, and yes, there is safety concern. And going across campus on foot, that's a, a little different kind of concern or injury.
We, we do have sidewalks. Yeah. We do have sidewalks that's out of the traffic that, but there are points where they go across and things that we, we would have to study it and then set up a safety plan for it. A good point. Now, this, this only meets about a third of the needs of what we identified in September, but we need to get momentum, we need to get something addressed, and the, and, and we need to capture the money that's a partnership with us, or else it's going to be more money on our district to have to shoulder on the projects and with all the inflationary costs. So we do appreciate everybody's consideration, and we hope that you'll be supportive, but yet get all the facts that you need to, to consider. Anything else?
Is the auditorium and classroom all the same size as the original plan? I didn't think that.
I'm sorry?
Is this one of the same size as the original plan?
No, we've had to pare it down. We've had to even scale this down, like, you know, the auditorium, the classrooms that we were going to build, all it had to be scaled down in different degrees. I mean, the auditorium is probably 60% cut versus what it was. A lot of classrooms we had to get rid of because they do not qualify for the partnership money that we wanted to do. It's a start. It, it will get us going. The cafeteria is the biggest violation we've got on standards, and that will at least get us where we can serve kids and folks. Currently, we, we cannot, takes us about three hours to get a cycle through. We started at 10 o'clock with junior high and try to get it all cleaned up, wrapped up by 1:00. We cannot serve breakfast because it's a three-hour cycle. We lose hundreds of thousands of dollars a year from the federal programs, food service programs, because we cannot serve meals. We get reimbursed for that. We don't have time or space to offer breakfasts for folks, and we're almost at 60% on our needs for free and reduced lunches and meals. And so that's another just thing that breaks our heart, that we have food insecurities from our community that we would love to address, and there's money there to do it, but our facilities are keeping us from being able to do that for our kids. And so with this facility, with the cafeteria and kitchen, we can offer full breakfasts for both the junior high and the high school and full lunches. And again, it will mean hundreds of thousands of dollars more to our food service program to offer those services and to make sure our kids' food insecurities are taken care of. So that, again, that just starts, we have such a big need, we've got to address these things.
Are we out of space overall in the district, or is it just at some emphasis?
The only campus we're not is at Sulfur Rock. We had to move in modulars at both the elementaries, the junior high, just this year, just to get through the year. We couldn't wait on any bond issue. It was just immediate. So every campus is out of space except Sulfur Rock. That's now a preschool, West, high school, junior high, Eagle, all are out of space. And, you know, it's a blessing. I mean, we were walking in tonight, talking to people, Batesville, and I have my own grandson and my own kids, and they are looking for towns like Batesville now to raise their kids. Two of my kids can work remotely, so just, but they get to live where they want to live for quality of life. And towns like Batesville that have the quality of life, like a community center and schools and city parks and things, that quality of life, and then knowing the security and the relationships you have here, we're a goldmine. And I see us, Batesville will continue to grow. We have, we're blessed with industry that's hiring jobs, and it's industry that's based out of necessity, food, manufacturing goods, things that you use. That is not going to be, that's going to be consistent. And so with that consistency, I think we can count on consistent growth with the quality of life. And so we're negotiating with the community now that the educational quality of life needs to match where the numbers are and what we need to do to maintain that, that quality of lifestyle. So we're excited about it, and it's a blessing, but we do have to sort it out with our community that we are growing and we have needs that we've got to address. So we think this is a good plan. We heard from the voters that they think... We heard from the voters that they did not want to increase taxes. So we went to work with our financial folks and everyone else that's affiliated. We created a plan that did not raise taxes, but yet got us some momentum to get after some of the most dire needs of facilities and where the partnership money was at to help offset or to keep it at no cost. So we are excited about the plan because we think it's a way to move forward.
How are we on staff? I know that would be uncomfortable.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. So the question is, for those listening and recording, is how are we on staffing? The two biggest challenges that the school board and the administration has is facilities and attracting and retaining staff because those are big money items. Usually the bond issue is how the community helps with the facilities and about 80% of our budget is spent on personnel. And so those are big things. There's teacher shortages that there are just not people, the people are just not going to education and for whatever reasons. And so there's a shortage when it comes to teachers that we have to keep our monies focused on staff too. Districts that's growing a lot or that doesn't have help from the community on the facilities, you've got to make sure it's warm and dry. I think it's the, that the ninth term, warm and dry, safe and dry?
Warm, safe, dry.
Warm, safe, dry first. That's the first thing for the kids. But then if you're going to spend all your money as a district on that, you are not going to have the quality, and we all know that who we put with those kids every day, that's the real quality of their education. While they're warm, safe and dry, the quality comes with who we put with them, those relationships and those skills. So our, our task then is keep money going too, to keep up with the competitiveness or the shortages in the market, which means you've got to keep those salaries up there. And as you know, lately, there's even on the classified, the hourly folks, there's such competition and in the market and the rise of salaries that again, we had to have the balance of the community helping with facilities so we can also keep budget for staff. If one of those gets out of whack, we don't either, we either don't have facilities or we have facilities and we don't have the staff retained and attracted. So those are all a balance that with the big money factors that we have to take on. And it's a constant concern.
Are we having trouble finding qualified certified staff?
At times it is an issue. The question was, are we having trouble finding qualified or certified staff? And at times and in different departments or grade levels, it is an issue. If, if, when the lateness of a resignation too, you know, when people are available, those all are things that we juggle. But what we're trying to do now is we are trying to, we, we went from worst to first. The board made a bunch of decisions about reducing our footprint and increasing our efficiencies and finding partners to help us gain more revenue where we don't have it traditionally. And by doing that, we went from worst to first on our teacher pay scale. But we also had to make some other tough decisions to get there. And so sometimes people understand that and sometimes they don't. But the good news is, is in this area, we are one of the top salaries and that's okay. We want, we want to be the top because if we're the top, we're going to get our top choices and then the other districts are going to have to worry about what they do past that. But it really is just, the pool is very limited and usually we're robbing from someone to get somebody and they're struggling too. So if you're on top of your salaries, you eliminate a lot of those problems. Good problems to have. I would rather be growing and know we have confidence that our budgets are now going to be strong, we're going to be able to give raises and our community is going to respond to help us with our needs and facility. That's what we believe we have in Batesville. Okay? Any other questions? And no, we have not called school off yet for ice and snow in case you were one. And that's for the adults. The kids are just fine. It's the adults that's been bugging me the most. We are thankful that you came out tonight and we appreciate your consideration on all these issues. Thanks to our guests for driving here. Call for information. We appreciate that. Thank you, everybody. And there's some water and some snacks back there. Grab some if you're hungry or thirsty before you leave. And we'll be around here to answer questions if you'd like. But this time we'd like to shut the meeting down and thank everybody for being here. Appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll give you a little.